Alright, everybody, we're just before six o'clock, so I just started the live on us. Talk about whatever you want to talk about. Can you do me a favor and just make sure that you can get to this on the live? The live started, I just want to make sure that it's not set to private again for some reason. I've got one person online, so, fingers crossed.
Yes, I don't think, or just set to only up front or something?
Yeah. Um, should be just at FCUSD168.
Good evening, everyone. I believe it is six o'clock, means it is time that I call a special meeting of the Frankfurt Community Unit School District Number 168 to order. The purpose of the special meeting is to consider action on bids for mowing services, participation in an IHSA cooperative, authorization of a line of credit, authorization to develop an extended school year program, discussion of the sale of working cash bonds, formal approval of the memorandum of understanding, and other required items. To determine if the board is present, I would ask the secretary to please call the roll.
I am here. Mr. Brownie?
Here.
Mr. Burns?
Here.
Mr. Connor?
Here.
Mr. Rossett is not here. Ms. Steinberg?
Here.
Mr. Tony?
Here. I certify that a board is present. Would everyone please rise to join Mr. Larry Burns, school board member, as we say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic to which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, hearing of delegates, visitors, and public comments. This is the time in the meeting when we ask if any delegates or visitors would like to make public comments for the board to hear. If you wish to speak, per Board Policy 2.230, we ask that you identify yourself for the record and limit your comments to no longer than five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak who is not otherwise on the agenda?
Hi, Mr. Brownie, just to add an addition. So, starting off, I want to ask if has any work been done or has anything been planned about the transportation costs and health insurance costs that were cited in the federal regulations laws?
Okay, actually, this is for public comment, it's not really a Q&amp;A section.
I understand that, but the compiled statutes for school code and the open meetings access, this is exactly where we would do questions. If you have somewhere that you prefer me to ask these questions, I can do that as well, but I would like it to be-
You don't always expect answers immediately like we talked last time.
Yeah.
But we're always planning around financial and operational issues.
Okay, anything specific?
Not this time because we're still looking at funding.
Right. Alright, how much debt does the district currently hold? Okay, we are, can we say how much we are seeking for this line of credit?
When we get to that point of the meeting, we'll talk about that.
Okay, can we say what's securing this debt?
We'll talk about that when we get to that point of the meeting.
And will we talk about the impact it will have on the individual taxpayer?
Again, we'll talk about that at that point of the meeting.
Awesome. Alright, so, is the board aware that multiple positions have been eliminated for the next school year as of last week?
The board took action last week, quarter one to eliminate.
On four positions. There's been much more that have been eliminated.
Oh, we voted, this board voted and eliminated the positions, the personnel who are now returning.
There were four people, and since last week, there have been at least five more who have been told their positions-
I will say again, the total number of positions which was watched for a bad line is what's been eliminated. Those people receive reduction in force notices.
So, we're not going to go in circles on this. So, can we talk about why we're extending the special education school year?
We will talk about that when we get to that point of the meeting.
Alright, the cuts that have been made, can we talk about how it will impact our students and if that would change the type of students who can participate in class?
In which class?
For example, say, certain children need X amount of adults in the room in order to be a part of that class. Do the cuts affect the type of classes we can have in regards to-
When we consider cuts, we look at all laws and requirements and make sure that we cover them.
So, has that happened here? Are we now losing classes?
We always do that.
I understand that, but these particular cuts and what we just did, does that affect the classes that we do have current?
You talking about teaching positions?
Teaching positions or aid positions? Either.
Having more or less staff is possibly always going to affect something.
Possible. Okay.
That affects all positions in the district because everybody's got to do a little more.
The extension of the special education school year, has that been accounted for in our deficit reduction plan?
We'll talk about that when we get there. It's part of our operations.
Okay.
We'll talk about why we have the extended school year program when we get to that point in the agenda.
Alrighty, the last week we made, or last meeting whenever we talked about the loss in the meat grant that we had for the school, was that accounted for in our deficit reduction plan or has it impacted our deficit reduction?
I'm not sure that we had that grant when we developed the deficit reduction plan at the beginning of the year.
Okay. Lastly, this one really is a much more a comment. I would urge anybody in the community to get into the Illinois compiled statutes themselves to look up what is and isn't permissible along with their rights. For example, in Chapter 740 of the ILCS, Section 174, that happens to deal with retaliation and adverse employee or employer actions. I just want to say that if anything is happening in that regard, there are very well-defined definitions of what that constitutes and what the repercussions of that are. If anybody feels that that is happening, they can disclose that in any sort of public session to their union reps or up to the attorney general. Just really quick, the sort of things that happen if that is found to be true, there will be permanent or preliminary injunctive relief, reinstatement with the same seniority, back pay with interest, and compensation for any costs incurred as a result, so your attorney fees and such. Additionally, the court awards a civil penalty of $10,000 payable to the employee. The last thing I have on my notes is I would like an itemized report of all expenditures or aggregated expenditures over $500 for fiscal year '23 and fiscal year '24 in the education, maintenance, and operations, capital projects, and capital aid funds. And we can talk about how to send that or put it out.
Okay, so you're making a Freedom of Information Act request?
Not a FOIA, it's-
Well, it sort of would be. I mean, we'll get the material, but that's sort of what that would be considered.
Okay.
Yeah, if we could talk and if you could simply be exactly what you need that way.
Sure. But that's all I got. Thank you.
Anyone else?
So, I know at the meeting, the last meeting, you had discussed eliminations that you guys were proposing. I'd like to make a couple comments and concerns, mostly because it sounded like we're going to lose four aides and we're getting additional aides being lost.
Well, that's not the case.
In rooms-
That's not the case.
Okay.
The total number of aides is four. How they are staffed is up to how we need to staff them according to the law.
Well, it's hard when there's no transparency, there's no figures for the public, and there are people who are concerned. I mean, I don't have a kid in any of these rooms. I just have a special needs kid, and I know that if he was in those rooms, I would care a lot.
As do we.
But we're, from what I'm hearing, and I mean, I have to go on hearsay, most of the people do because nothing is being made transparent to us as voters. We don't know how you're planning to restructure this. You're talking about rooms with high interaction rates. You're talking about kids who have low functions. These are rooms that should have one special ed teacher, two aides, and six children at max, and that does not include any children that are one-to-one ratios. One of the rooms, I realize as a kid with a one-to-one ratio, and I mean, as far as I can tell by the rumor mill, you've got one teacher, one aide in a room. With kids who need CPI intervention, a kid is going to get hurt. I'm a bleeding heart, guys. No, that should not happen. There's no way you can transition kids. It can't. If you're restructuring these rooms, everyone is in a panic because no information is being given, both to the teachers and to the public. Who cares? Second off, all these terminations are happening in public spaces? That is absolutely abhorrent to our teachers and our aides. Whose brilliant idea was that? It's not only immoral, but it's illegal. Why are kids walking past people who just found out their job was eliminated? With people crying in the hallways? This shouldn't have been done in private. I've ran a business since I was 18. In none of my HR rankings did it say in public hallways that we fire people. Well, how does that teach our staff? I worked my butt off in all of the PTAs in any school in this district. I hope even ones that my kids aren't in. Because I am a bleeding heart. I get it, I'm too soft. But that is a private HR conversation, and you are setting yourselves up for lawsuit that we cannot afford because we're being callous, immoral, and we're treating our staff as if we're disposable. That should not happen. Has any of you been fired in a public place and then been expected to go back to work? We need to hide, we need to make our staff do better. Codes of conduct should be adhered to. We have a basketball coach at senior night when a player is on the floor and several board members were there, who is screaming at an umpire not even caring about his kid. These are your employees, and everything happens behind closed doors. No public statements, that we are taking action, we regret what has happened. Here is how we are planning to handle this. People would not be so upset if we had tangible ideas of what your ideas are. Heck, if your voices are being heard, we are voting for you to be our voice, and we don't know what you think. I know no one wants to fire anybody. I've hated every single firing I've done, even if they were deserved. It turns your gut. Tell us your voice, please. We deserve that much. The teachers and your employees deserve that compassion and that respect.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
My name is Casey Smith. I'm a paraprofessional here at Central Junior High School. I've only been with the district for six years, which to some people is a lot. To give you a little idea, I'm about halfway in six years. I have almost halfway up the seniority list. What a lot of people don't understand about the aides is the board only cut four positions, or four people. People do not understand that when your job is solely based on seniority, if your position is cut, you feel as if you have been cut. Mine is one of the ones that was cut. I work in the BD room, surrounded by children with very high needs. And the majority of the BD, it's not called BD anymore, I'm sorry, that's not politically correct, but I don't, it's changed about four times in the last, since I've been here. The junior high currently has either nine or 10 in our class. My position as the second aide in the class has been cut, so next year, our estimated numbers will be around 11. Well, 13, we actually have a 16-year-old here at the junior high in BD.
Be careful there.
I am very, I'm giving very general, what I'm trying to explain is this is a very wide age range. This is the smallest school, and people assume that means we have the smallest amount of needs or the smallest as far as staffing and so forth. We are dealing with kids who are hitting puberty, and hormones can be a little crazy. But as an aide, your position is based on your seniority. So even though you only cut four people, there were at least, there are eight who have lost their spots, one of which here at the junior high, the junior high lost four spots in this smaller school. One of them has been your employee with the district for 21 years. She now has to bid on the only available positions, that's how we get to stay in the district, is we bid on one of the open positions, whatever they may be. She now has to bid among those jobs that are, the only thing available at this point is the jobs that people don't want. So you have an employee of 21 years who is within a very, within five years of retirement, who now has to go back to the children who are very high needs, violent. This is another area where somebody's going to get hurt. I don't want anybody to lose their jobs, and yes, I have a personal stake in this because my job was one of those cut. My position was cut. I still have a job with the district. I'm very clear on that. My fear is that somebody's going to get hurt, whether it's an aide, whether it's a child, and the, you know, the public would freak out if it's a child. We don't want anybody to get hurt. These aides are spending, just like the teachers, so much of their own money on basic needs for these kids. And the aides were told yesterday that these cuts were based on our numbers being low, our special ed numbers being low. However, at the last meeting, which was only two weeks ago, Jody DeJermat, I never say it right, I'm so sorry, stood right here and said that the December 1st child count certified numbers are certified, and we are up 10 students from the last year. These are IEP students. Within two weeks, she stood here and told you she needs all of these extra administrative positions because the numbers are so high, they have so many meetings, so much paperwork to do. And then she chose to eliminate eight aides who are wiping kids' butts, who are wrestling to the floor, risking their own health and safety. And now, your employees, the morale of your employees is horrible. We are terrified. And we feel like we're getting nothing from you. There is no empathy, there is no open knowledge. We have to beg to get an answer, and then we get things like this, and a basic amount of research. The aides are told it's because the special ed numbers have gone down, but at the very last meeting, you all and the whole public were told that the numbers have went up. And any special ed teacher that I have talked to within the last year will completely go against that and tell you these classrooms, the special ed classrooms are bigger than they have ever been.
Excuse me, but your time was-
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Anyone else? If not, we will move along then to item number three, under new business, Part A, Business Operations Proposals and Agreements. Number one, consideration of awarding of bids for mowing services.
We advertised for mowing bids for mowing services in two different groupings. We received four bids. They were due by noon on Monday. Spaces, Group One was for Franklin Community High School Attendance Centers, the main building, Maximore's Gym, the weight room, vocational building, attached lots and ditches, the practice field, the ditches. Group Two was the area around Johnson Field outside the fence area, parking lots around there, the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of those. The Central Junior High School, Frankfurt Intermediate School, and Dilling Elementary School, and the Creek Cave open grounds. Received four bids. The low bid came from American Mowing Services LLC, operated by Will McKinney from Carterville, Illinois. They had the bid two years ago. He had worked for a firm who had done mowing previously, we may add that up for bid. The Group One bid was $150 per mowing. The Group Two bid was $350 for mowing for a grand total of $500 per mow. And that happens weekly unless we're to a point it gets so dry it doesn't need to be mowed from after the fall. So I would recommend we award the American Mowing Services LLC.
Any other questions of Mr. Duncan concerning this matter?
We had a couple years ago when there was no issues, was there? They did a pretty good job.
They did a nice job. They communicated with us well.
Anyone else? If there are no further questions, I would entertain a motion to award the bid for mowing services for the 2025 mowing season to American Mowing Services LLC from Carterville, Illinois. Can I get a motion?
Oh, I see.
You know, Mr. Steinberg, how about a second? Like I heard, Mr. Connor? I'm sorry, Mr. Burns? Any further discussion? If not, roll the call vote, please.
I see. Yes, Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tony?
Yes. Item two, consideration of approval to participate in an IHSA wrestling cooperative with Christopher Community School District Number 99. Mr. Duncan?
Last year, we were approached by Christopher, District 99, about doing a wrestling cooperative. It worked well this year. In fact, one of those students was pretty successful in one of regional. Those were done on Mr. Harris' two-year cycles.
Yes.
And unfortunately, we were halfway through the cycle last time, so tonight we would cover the next two years, correct?
Yep.
Any further questions of Mr. Duncan? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve an agreement to participate in an IHSA wrestling cooperative with Christopher Community School District Number 99, and authorize a superintendent to verify that all relevant arrangements be completed as required. Do you go ahead and hear a motion?
I'll wait.
Thank you, Mrs. Brownie. How about a second?
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Brownie. Roll the call vote, please.
I'd say yes. Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Tony?
Yes.
Ms. Steinberg?
Yes.
Mr. Tony?
Yes. Item three, discussion of options to sell working cash bonds. Mr. Duncan?
As we have looked at our cash flow situation and as we have looked at various options, as prices have gone up, sometimes unexpectedly, and revenue has gone down, we developed the deficit reduction plan that is a multi-year plan. As things smoothed out, as we have made, eliminated some positions for next school year, that was harder. We also anticipate several retirements, three to four a year for the next three years, which will also ease some of our expenditures. However, we also need to take a look to make sure that cash flow remains available to be able to operate the district and meet payroll. District had bid at this point in 2016, when they made a move to sell working cash bonds, which were, have since been paid off. We know we cannot borrow our way out of this, nor do we intend to, but this is a chance, especially not knowing at this point exactly what the cash flow situation will be from the federal government through the state, or if things will run behind as Medicaid currently is, to make sure that we can still operate here as we go through. The, a bridge, if you will, to get us to the other side of this. We have talked with Mr. Kevin Willis from Bernardi Securities on previous bond sales. We have the permission and the room to be able to do something, but we are taking this to as limited amount as we can. I have said- every year that this school district is one of the five lowest property tax rate districts south of Interstate seven. It is us, it is Ziegler Royalton, it is Harden County, I think Galton County, and then one of the either Alexander or Classic County schools. We can only go up according to consumer price index with that. If we do anything, we could still be one of the lowest property tax school districts in this area. And in accounting, we had talked about before where the tax rate this past year was two point nine. This is a two point nine cents of every dollar. The other districts and the communities around us are at three five, except for Ziegler, are at three four, three point five to four point five. So they bring in more at the beginning. But this district has, has known it needs to run lean, but also meet the needs of its students, which is what we try to do. What I would ask Mr. Willis to do tonight is we discussed some options. This could be set up to do at the regular April board meeting. I want to kind of review the options and some numbers we were looking at as a tentative step before, but kind of get us closer to being brought up to speed. So, Mr. Willis.
All right, so what I passed out are a couple of repaid scenarios for you to review and consider. In no way are these absolute. These just provide you with some guidance as to what type of proceeds could be generated through the working cash bond issue process based on certain parameters used in these scenarios. So what we've got here would be the process you've gone through to provide you the ability to issue working cash bonds, which is a tool that districts have the ability to use under statute to provide operating capital. And that's what this is, is, as Mr. Dyson said, is to provide some operating capital that will be repaid through the bond, through the bond levy process. So the district's security, if you will, on that would be the ability for the district to levy out the lower property taxes against the taxable property within the district.
At this point, we have two bonds out.
You have two bond issues outstanding. One of those bond issues was done a couple of years ago. Approximately two point seven million remains outstanding on that. Those bonds were issued for capital improvement projects. These specific projects, I don't remember off the top of my head. Those bonds are being repaid through the district's receipt of the county school facility sales tax funds that come in monthly. And there's a second bond issue outstanding that was done in 2021. That's got about two payments left. That's at seven hundred and eighty thousand. So you've got a payment coming due on that bond issue this December, and you've got the final payment on that one in December of 2026. Those bonds were also issued for capital improvement needs that the district had at the time. So part of the scenario that we've put together here for consideration, again, nothing is final here. We can adjust these as necessary based on your discussion and feedback afterwards. But what we've put together here shows scenarios where you would use your remaining school facility sales tax funds, right? Those are the dollars that are coming in through the one cent sales tax in Franklin County. You would be using remaining proceeds that you have coming in through those sales tax receipts to make the final two payments on the bonds that we issued a couple of years ago, those final two payments I mentioned. Okay, the payment due later this year and the one due next year for those capital improvement bonds issued in 2021. Why? Because use of those proceeds is an authorized use, or using proceeds for that reason is an authorized allowable use of those proceeds under statute. Thus, replacing the bond levy initially issued for those with bonds levied to repay these working cash bonds, you can start making payments on those right away. So in these scenarios, that's what assumption has been made, that we would reroute the school facility sales tax funds, the additional amount, to make the final two bond payments on that capital improvement bonds issued in 2021, which then frees up that levy space, if you will, the bond levy, to be used to repay these working cash bonds right out of the gate rather than having to wait and wrap something around it close. So in these scenarios here, you're going to see really three scenarios. The first one shows you issue some working cash bonds. We're showing in these scenarios around six to seven years in terms of repayment. Again, you don't need to borrow. Once you maybe give me some feedback and here's how much we really think we need for operating cash, then we can fine tune these some. But again, this should be, provide you with, you know, information enough now to maybe have some of those discussions as we start fine tuning this, or so we can fine tune this even more than prior conversations. But under this scenario here on this first page, you're going to see an estimated interest rate of around five and a half percent, which is the same for all of these because they're all about the same timeframe. And under this first scenario here, we're making payments right away. It's going to generate on this first scenario around just under two point six million in operating cash to be repaid back over those handful of years, six years or so that we just talked about. Second page shows if you use, the first page shows if you use the sales tax money to make just the first payment for the, the payment coming due a little bit later this year. Highlighted there that salmon color, whatever color that is. That's if you just use school facility sales tax money just for the one of two remaining payments. Generates about two point five, almost two point six million. Second page shows if you use sales tax money for the final two payments on the capital improvement bonds. Under the same tenor, the same repayment scenario bumps money, the proceeds up about two point nine. So you're still the same payoff date, but because you're leveraging those sales tax funds to make that second payment, you pick up an operating proceeds. And then the third and final one there shows if, just a scenario if you wanted to pay it off in fiscal year 2029, what does it look like? It's about two and a half. So just a couple of different scenarios here. Again, in that third scenario shows, again, leveraging the remaining or additional sales tax funds to make the next or final two payments on that capital improvement bond issued a few years ago. All these are showing an estimated rate of around five and a half percent. The last page, I think, is worth noting here. You're limited in the amount that you can levy because of the property tax extension limitation, well, commonly known as PTEL. So in these scenarios, or historically, let me, let me rephrase that. Historically, you've been extremely sensitive to the tax rate and did not want your bond interest tax rate to go up. You've been very, uh, I mean, I remember very specifically, don't raise the tax rate when we did the deal in 2021.
When we took, when one went off, we brought the next one in.
Right, to funds and capital improvement projects. And as those went off, your principal interest levy that was on file was going four hundred thousand. And I pointed out at the time, your ability to capture additional funds through the levy has gone up, which could reduce the overall interest that you may end up paying and so forth. But I remember at the time, didn't want to raise the tax rate for bond and interest. You wanted to keep it the same. So the bonds done in 2021 also had approximately four hundred thousand dollar annual payment. So you have the ability under tax caps, under PTEL, to levy up to about five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, give or take. That last page there shows that. You're currently using about four hundred thousand of that. So there's about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so that you could access, which allows you to pay these off that much faster and generate additional funds, maybe not having to go off so long in time in terms of repayment. So in these scenarios, we have calculated what that hundred and twenty-some thousand dollar, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase, should you decide, number one, to move forward with the working cash bond issue. And then number two, should you decide to increase the bond interest levy amount from approximately four hundred to, we'll call it five twenty-five, which is the amount currently authorized under PTEL. What does that do to a homeowner that has a market value home of fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, and a hundred and fifty thousand? And those are on the bottom right there. So just to pick the one hundred thousand dollar figure, why it's easily divisible or multiply it, you've got a home market value of a hundred thousand dollars. And we increase the bond and interest tax rate by about ten cents. That's what we're talking about going up. So four hundred thousand dollar levy is about forty, is about thirty-one cents here, your bond and interest component. If you bump it up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or so, it'll raise that to about forty cents, maybe forty-one. Again, these are all hypothetical. These are all estimates based on a guess of it as to what we think the 2024 equalized assessed valuation will be. Tell that certified by the county clerks for both Franklin and Winston Counties. You're not going to know specifically what that will be. But this should get you pretty close. So that's about a nine to ten cent tax rate increase all else equals. If I live in the district, my home's valued at a hundred thousand, that's market value. It's going to be about an extra thirty dollars per year, thirty-one bucks a year that you've got to pay out for, for that. Hundred and fifty thousand, forty-seven dollars and change. Fifty thousand divided a hundred by two, fifty thousand dollars, you're around fifteen or sixteen. Now, I'm aware there are homes valued more, there may be homes valued less, but it shouldn't get, yeah, ballpark or at least somewhat close to where that would, that would be.
So that, yeah, break down to a fifty thousand dollar scenario, about a dollar thirty, dollar thirty-five a month?
A month, yeah. Now, it raises it up and then it kind of stays at that level for the duration of the, of the bonds outstanding, correct? That is correct.
About two sixty, two seventy on a hundred thousand dollar home?
Less than five months. A month, yeah. You know, that should get you, yeah, less than five minutes, yeah, right. That's probably all the way up to almost to two hundred thousand.
I was going to say if you buy a paper, but people don't do that anymore, but whatever they may buy.
Now,
compared to that.
The, the other thing that we point out here is that, that that ability to levy under PTEL, the bond and interest grows if the lesser of CPI or five percent each year. So in these scenarios, we have assumed a one and a half percent growth in that bond payment. So just know that while it starts out at five twenty-five, it inches up at about one and a half percent each year. That's to continue to capture that. The goal being keeping that bond and interest tax rate relatively level. Because what we've seen in the past is your bond rate, quite frankly, your operating rate is at a certain level, but as EAV continues to outpace CPI, your tax rate that you levy to generate funds goes down. So the same could happen here. And so the idea would be, again, what are ways that we can generate or try to keep up with the inflation, if you will, or CPI and the bond repayment, try to get it paid off as fast as possible. Now, you don't need those kinds of proceeds. Have we thrown out these scenarios? Fine. Let me know what you think you're looking at, and then we can back into what that looks like. So in other words, we think we may need X. You dump it in here, kind of show us how long it would take to pay, to pay these off. This, again, should give you some ballpark idea of as to what you're, as to what you're looking at here. Just wanted to divide all those numbers by two, then everything just basically gets cut in half and shortened up.
It'll be a seven-year payoff in these scenarios.
Uh, and then one of them should be, uh, so we got one, two, three, four, five. Yeah, one's a six, right. Yeah, the second one is, the second page is six. So it kind of shows you the power of making that extra for that second payment with the sales tax funds. You shorten it up and you actually get more money. Not doing that.
You're still trying to keep room if something does happen with state capital construction.
Right.
Or for that matter, if something happens to our building period, we have a chance to go get financing to cover our side.
Right. You always, you always have the ability to, even once these are, depending on what direction you decide to add, or should you decide to go down a certain path, if you decide to move forward with the bond issue for this operating cash, again, we'll know exactly at that time how much you're trying to generate, and we can pinpoint how long it's going to take to pay it off here. But then, really for the next two years, what you're doing is you're rerouting some of your sales tax money to make the payments on the final, to make the final two payments on the bond issued a few years ago for capital improvements. Now, generally speaking, the state comes knocking. It's not going to happen this fiscal year. It doesn't sound like it's really going to happen next fiscal year. So point being, you'll have use of those remaining sales tax proceeds once these final two payments are made to be leveraged against future capital improvement financings as well, to your point, yes.
Did I understand you correctly that we have had two scenarios in the past, two bond sales?
Uh, yes, right. There was one done in 2021, and then one done just a couple of years back that were the sales tax ones.
How much was the one in 2021?
That one, well, what remains, I don't have the original amount on that, but what remains on that is seven hundred and eighty thousand.
Which amounts to how many payments?
Two payments.
Two payments?
One this December, one next December.
Now, I think I know the answer to this, but just to confirm. Whichever scenario we choose, will this add another bill to our list for which we need more money? Or will this extend the current bond that we have?
It's not going to extend the current bond you have. It just becomes a brand new one. It just gets inserted into your overall debt profile.
But it replaces, like, we already paid out the other ones, then it would just replace it to a not.
Essentially, yes. Yeah, you're, yeah, correct. Then we're, we're adding two. So I mean, if you did absolutely nothing, your bonds pay off in two years. What we're doing now is essentially kind of extending the footprint by a handful of years beyond the final two payments for generating these operating proceeds.
So in other words, the seven hu, seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars would go up by how much we agree as to what we need?
Well, that's not going up. That stays the same. You're just, you're just taking on additional debt, correct?
But at the end of that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. So in other words, we would have more than just two payments?
Yeah.
To have to pay off the used narrative, correct? Okay, so we're not adding another bill to our budget that we need to scrape and save nickels and dimes?
No, right, no, right. This is, this is not, this is not, these dollars will be paid from a dedicated line item on your tax extended tax computation report called the bond and interest levy.
Correct.
Now, the, the step in the process that you would have to take to finalize this is known as a bond resolution, technically a parameters bond resolution. That could be brought forth at any legally convened meeting coming forward once the new board is seated and, and reorganized. Can't be done before that. Uh, and so what would happen is your bond attorney, so the, the bond law firm that is preparing the documents on your behalf would draft a resolution, a parameters bond resolution, that would be brought forth and put on a future agenda for consideration and possible action. And what that does is that resolution, assuming if you would pass that resolution, then that would provide the authority to move forward and proceed with the bond sale, so long as it falls within certain parameters, such as we don't want any more than, you know, X, Y, Z in terms of dollar amounts and so forth. And then the bond issue or the bond sale would proceed. It delegates authority to the board president to execute and sign off on the final structure and scenario as long as it fits within those parameters set in that resolution. Again, that resolution would be broad, or it could be broad at any future meeting for consideration and possible action. You can't do it without a board president, so that would have to be the logical next step, should you decide to go down that path.
And this, this board, help me here, if this board can't continue and hand it off to the next board, we have to wait until the next board is seated to begin very much official kinds of expenditures?
That is correct. A resolution today can't tie the hands of, of, of a potential future board, correct? If there was a chance we could get it done and get it all closed by any money in the bank, then no problem, but that's not, that's
Not going to happen.
Not going to happen. Right.
Mr. Duncan, any more questions? Next one, questions?
I've got one. You may have said, I just missed it. On the page four here, on the growth rate, it's two point nine percent over our current.
Yeah.
You said if we did do the hundred and twenty-five, would that get up to five percent or what percentage?
No. So, so that, that growth rate is CPI. So that's consumer price index. That's how much your ability to levy for a non-voter approved bond issue has grown the last couple of years. So what that is, is that shows that the prior year was 513,000. And then it grew at 2.9% based on the 2024 consumer price index. Right, so that's going to continue to, that's going to, each year, that number, your ability to levy is going to continue to grow. And so what we've done on these scenarios is assumed a one and a half percent annual growth, we try to take advantage of and capture some of that future growth. With the goal in mind of trying to keep your bond and interest tax rate, again, just that small component of your overall tax rate relatively stable to try to time it and match it with that growth.
Ken, I have a question for you, to make sure I kind of understand the, the concepts here. So. It sounds like we've, in like the scenario six, you're tying our existing debt service. In with potential new debt service. And you're showing both being paid, meaning that our obligations to pay the debt that we have now. Is going to change with this, but it's going to go up just a little amount and we're effectively going to get 3 million dollars of working cash to use. To get us through the next six to seven years, and if we need to do it again, then we go again, it's like taking out a mortgage. And our payments aren't changing much from what we're paying now.
Right, they're just going up that difference that we, that we talked about from about 400 up to that 525.
It's going to be done in two years, we're extending it by some additional years to get through this comfort range.
Correct, ba- based, based on these scenarios here. Yeah, we get to come back and say, all we need is this and it's less than that and I can back into, how long is it really going to take based on. How much you project your operating need to be over those handful of, it's correct.
Thank you.
You never order me to show any questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Wow. And, and, and we are getting, um. Averaging from Franklin County about. Seven, eight hundred thousand dollars a year right now, Williamson County, um, where at this point we only had five students. Enrolled who were living there, um. Not as much, um, but as we're looking at these repayments scenarios. We can kind of figure how much would be covered by what's already coming in.
Correct.
And this is some of the funds we've been saving, um, trying to be ready. If something happened.
Correct.
Um, and then as we mentioned on those last couple of bonds. With those, we were able to keep the tax rate pretty level. Because we were also able to use the, uh, COVID funds and, and other state funds to, federal funds to. We kind of got more than we would have got either on our own or matched with that.
Right, what, I mean, actually, we could right go back and track the EAV, turn your tax rate probably went down, it was more than level. Because we kept the payment the same, at least again, looking at, looking at specifically the bond and interest component. Your tax rate would have been going down because you're letting the same amount against the tax base that's going up, which means your tax rate goes down. So it was more than a level, it was actually a slight decrease if you probably looked at the EAV growth over the last few years.
I'm afraid I indicated that it was, it was either 1% higher, 2, 3, 4% lower.
Right.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Okay, very good.
And was there anything else?
Guys have a great night.
Thank you, appreciate your time, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Wills.
You're welcome. Staying on number four, consideration resolution authorizing a line of credit with Bantera Bank.
So at this point. Uh, what I'm asking for is actually authorization to begin the process.
The last several years, we have, uh. Asked for a line of credit. So I've been doing it since I came back to the district in 2017, the first two years we used it, we were able to get, didn't have to towards the end of the year. This past year, we did, um. That has to be, that is paid back through the following year's levy, which that money goes straight to the bank coming out of the levy.
Correct.
Um, and hard to get ahead when you're paying off that loan just within the same fiscal year. I don't think that we're going to need to do a resolution on this at the end, if we do this other option. But what you're authorizing tonight is we start the process, that way we're basically leaving it up next month to, we've got a couple of options here. To bridge the gap.
So in other words, we're author, we may authorize you. To check with Bantera Bank to see if it's available?
Yes.
Is that a simple way of saying it?
Yes, and that's what we pre-.
And hopefully we won't have to use it, but up there as a.
Hopefully we won't even have to go forward. With the paperwork to do it.
This is just a backup to the.
Yes.
Any other plan?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Duncan?
What's the working line that we're going to be potentially asking for in 2000, 100,000?
What was the line of credit this past year, that's based upon what our?
It's based upon the ad, ad fund, I think it's a percent, again, I think 75%. Last year we were authorized up to 1.7 million, we ended up taking 750,000 dollars. Pay that back when the property tax distribution was paid us.
Last time we was talking, I'm sorry?
It offered us, no, it was 1.7 million.
But we didn't take that?
But we're also looking at either, or not doing so, just getting started processing the number, yeah, okay.
Correct, to keep options open.
Any other questions of Mr. Duncan? If not. I would entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent to begin the process to secure a line of credit at Bantera Bank for the use of Franklin Community Unit School District number 168. Do you hear a motion?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, how about a second?
Oh, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Connor, any further discussion? If not, please call the rules.
I say yes, Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Steinberg? Yes, Mr. Connor?
Yes. Item B, curricular and extracurricular programs. Consideration of authorization to develop a 2025 special education extended school year program. Mr. Duncan?
Starting 15, 20 years ago, I noticed as I was going back through minutes, I'm doing some other research. Uh, began a process for, uh. Certain students whose individual, uh, education plan, their IEP. Um, indicated that they needed some extended time with a summer school program. That is in students' IEPs, it's in, um. Let me see. Bring that piece of paper out here with me. At this point, there are nine students who would be eligible to extend the school year program according to their IEP. We would expect to run this program from June 2nd to June 20th. Nine students, we're looking to recommend two teachers and two program aides, uh, plus the transportation. A majority of those students do need speech. Assistance in speech, uh, one day a week is probably, uh, would meet that requirement. So we'd be looking for a part-time, one-day-a-week speech therapist for those three weeks. Uh, we have a few students who would need to see a physical therapist. So we would need them to be available for this as well. As I said, this is one of those programs that we've done, that we are required to do, and we do, um. Make plans for the start of the year, um, as we set the budget, so. Would ask us to formally develop that so we can start the beginning process and the job placement process.
Any other questions of the board? Mr. Duncan? If not, I would entertain a motion to authorize the superintendent and the director of special education. To develop a special education extended school year program to be held on in June of 2025. Do you hear a motion? Mr. Brownie, how about a second?
I'll second.
This is Steinberg. Any discussion? If not, please call the rules.
I say yes, Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Steinberg? Yes, Mr. Connor?
Yes. Section C, possible closed session. I would entertain a motion to convene enclosed session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body performance. I'm sorry. To discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations. Concerning salary schedules from one or more classes of employee and other matters relating to individual students as stated in five ILCS. Articles 120 slash 2, section 2, subsections 1, 2, and 10. Do you hear a motion? Thank you, Mr. Connor, how about a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Burns, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
I say yes, Mr. Brownie?
Yes.
Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Steinberg? Yes. Mr. Connor?
Yes.
659.
Thank you all very much for the discussion and the level of detail.
Back up?
It, it does.
Mr. Brad?
Yes, sir.
We're going to be here when we come back down.
That'll save us. Alright. So the board is going into closed session right now. Um, I'm going to take the live off, um, while they're in there, because they're probably going to be in there for a couple of hours. What we discussed was the forbids for mowing, the rest of the co-op. Um, there was a lot of talk of the bonds, essentially. We have 2.7 million dollars outstanding that's being paid for by our facility taxes and 780K is being paid for by our property taxes. That's outstanding, that's what we still have left. Now, if we use our facility tax fund to pay off our property taxes, as Mr. Will suggested. For the next two payments to, to pay off that 780K. Legally, that means our property taxes have to be abated or reduced by the amount that facility sales tax was used for these property taxes. I didn't hear any mention of that, but I'm sure that, um, they've taken that into account when offering these bonds. Uh, these bonds are set for anywhere between six to eight years. The numbers were mentioned specifically how much they estimate it would cost the individual taxpayer. The terms that they were basing their estimates on in terms of, um, growth and, um, the estimated valuation of the town. I mean, they're there, they, they weren't outrageous. Uh, next, they talked about the line of credit, um, through Bantera, and this is essentially if they get a better deal through Bantera. They're going to go with this line of credit instead. Notably there though, I'm not sure how that would play out with the current two payments that we have. Outstanding, uh, that they were going to use the facility tax money for. So, but tonight was just giving them permission to ask Bantera to give us more details. And then finally, the special ed extension, um. This is, they, the board was basically giving permission to develop a plan for this, so nothing has been budgeted yet as far as I can tell. They did mention two teachers, two aides, one part-time speech therapist, and one physical therapist. Now, I'm not someone who's very familiar with what it takes to run certain special ed classrooms. But I do know that, um, certain classrooms require a certain amount of adults in the room. So, um, if they're running two classes with two teachers and two aides. I don't know who's, if, if that's going to be sufficient, but again, that's something to make sure of, um, once the actual plan comes out. So they'll probably be in there for at least three hours, um, that's kind of the general run of things. So check back whenever, um. In about three hours and, you know, when you see the live come up again, they're back out in closed session. Thanks.